Welcome, everybody, to our City Commission meeting of November 2. We appreciate you all being here today. We'll call this meeting to order. And I just want to remind everybody that we are celebrating Commissioner Torga's birthday today. Not now, I don't know if it's actually today, but this week, we're celebrating and we will have cake after the meeting. So, happy birthday, Commissioner Torga. And if you'll join me, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right. So first on our agenda is presentations. And we have a presentation, a proclamation for Drive Electric Tampa Bay. I will turn that over to Vice Mayor Gow.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Drive Electric Tampa Bay. Natalie Gass, would you please come forward to receive this proclamation? Whereas the National Drive Electric Program has been developed to educate citizens about the benefits of plug-in electric vehicles. And whereas the city of Dunedin is dedicated to being the statewide model for environmental sustainability stewardship and to protect and improve our natural resources for the enjoyment of all. And whereas the city of Dunedin is dedicated to being a leader in the use of clean energy, increasing charging station infrastructure, and establishing policies and programs that conserve energy and promote sustainability. And whereas petroleum-fueled vehicles are responsible for over 50% of our local greenhouse gas emissions and are a contributing factor to the air pollution and climate change threatening the health of our citizens and the sustainability of our planet. And whereas the transportation sector is moving forward clean energy technology that reduces our independence on fossil fuels and supports a healthy environment and economy. And whereas the city of Dunedin has partnered with neighboring municipalities in North Penales County to establish the Drive Electric Tampa Bay event, which will be hosted in Oldsmar on Saturday, November 13, 2021. That's downtown Oldsmar on Saturday, November 13, 2021. Now therefore, I, Jeff Gow, by the virtue of the authority vested in me by the mayor of the city of Dunedin, and on behalf of the entire City Commission, do hereby proclaim November 2021 as Drive Electric Tampa Bay in the city of Dunedin and call upon all residents of the city and throughout Tampa Bay to join me in supporting the aims and goals of this worthwhile effort.
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, and City Manager. Natalie Gass, Sustainability Program Coordinator for the city. I am so excited November has been dedicated to Drive Electric Tampa Bay. It is my honor to be partnering with the cities of Oldsmar, Safety Harbor, Tarpon Springs to bring this event to you, which will be held in Oldsmar this year. We're really grateful for this partnership and to have regional collaboration on Drive Electric Tampa Bay, as well as many of the other initiatives that we have at hand. The city of Dunedin has 10 charging stations throughout the city for electric vehicles to plug in. And the city currently has four electric vehicles within its fleet, and we hope to gain more as admin vehicles come up for replacement. Since 2014, this annual Tampa Bay event has been promoting the benefits of electric transportation options. And for licensed drivers interested in test driving, we will have a ride and drive at the event. We will also have a car show with people showing off their electric vehicles and sustainable vendors. There's going to be food trucks and family-friendly games for all ages. So we're really excited for everyone to come out and join us. And we thank you for helping us charge into the future. Thank you.
Very good. Quick question before we give her the round of applause she deserves. I get asked a lot about golf cart charging stations. And I think the electric vehicle versus the golf cart are two different things, right?
They're two different things.
And we do have a few, right?
We have a station at the public library, Dunedin Public Library.
And don't we have one at the garage?
Yes, we do.
That's what I was going to say. I thought we, at the garage.
We have one at the garage as well.
Okay. So we should probably put that out there. But are they expensive?
I don't, they're not prohibitively expensive, no.
I mean, I think it, I just get asked about it a lot. And you see how many golf carts we have. And it would be great if we could get some more, whatever that would take. So I just throw that out there. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great. Okay. Now I would like to invite Les Tyler, our Finance Director, and Ashley Kimpton, our Budget Manager, forward. And we're so excited about all your hard work. I'm going to turn it over to Jennifer.
Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. The Government Finance Officers Association is pleased to announce that the city of Dunedin, Florida, has been, has received the GFOA's Distinguished Budget Presentation Award for our current fiscal year budget. The GFOA is a group of about 2,800 professionals, and it spans all governmental entities and even some private firms. They recognize achievement and excellence in government as far as the budgeting process goes. The Government Finance Officers Association advances excellence in government finance by providing best practices, professional development, resources, and practical research for more than 2,100 members, actually, across the nation. An independent panel then reviews the budgets of those 2,800 entities and advances those that are awarded the Distinguished Budget Award. And I just want to read to you a little bit of some of the narrative on the budget award. Presents, the Government Finance Officers Association in the United States of America and Canada presents the Certificate of Recognition for Budget Preparation to the city of Dunedin, Florida. The Certificate of Recognition for the Budget Preparation is presented by the Government Finance Officers Association to those individuals who have been instrumental in their government unit achieving a Distinguished Budget Presentation Award. The Distinguished Budget Presentation Award, which is the highest award in government budgeting, is presented to those units whose budgets are judged to adhere to program standards. So I want to congratulate our Finance Department, our Budgeting Division, for the hard work and through, actually, the pandemic. The last two years have been very difficult for our Budget Division, and they have excelled. Our budget is, of course, balanced. The reserve is good, and we have a good year ahead of us. So I want to congratulate Les and Ashley for all the time that they put into their budget. And this is actually, I think, the 13th year in a row, 13th year in a row that we have won this award. So I'm very proud of them, Mayor. Thank you.
As are we. If you will come forward, I'd love to present this to you. It's heavy. This is what it looks like. Here, I'll come down.
Oh, boy. Smile.
Yeah, take those masks off for the picture. Oh, thank you, it's no. You'll get it up there faster than I will.
Thank you.
So congratulations to both of you. Thank you so much. There you go. It's a heavy one.
Thank you. I'm Les Tyler, the Finance Director, and I'm here with Ashley, Budget Manager, as you all know. I just want to mention one thing real quick, that I want to mention that one of the things they look at is our financial policies and procedures. And I want to commend the Commission and the City Manager for setting those policies and procedures because we do have, I think, solid ones. That's been affirmed by our rating agencies as well. So I want to, I want to mention that. And also, I want to thank all the departments because it's a 400-page document, I think, right? Or something like that. And it's a team effort. So I want to thank everybody for all their hard work on the budget. Thank you. Ashley, you want to say anything?
Yeah, just really quick. I also wanted to give a shout out to Accounting, Ross Adair, Scott Katerson, Tanya Burnett, she was with us, and also Tammy Richardson. She helped a lot as well. So just our finance team.
Well, don't go anywhere because I'm sure the Commission has a lot to say about this too because we've experienced your process. But I'll just go ahead and also read something that was written on the press release, which is, you know, "The award represents a significant achievement by you all. It reflects the commitment of this body and staff to meeting the highest principles of government budgeting. It includes a policy document, a financial plan, an operation guide, and a communication device." And it's so true. I think our residents don't realize that our budget is our communication device of, you know, how their tax dollars are being spent, but all the different things that we're going to work on through the year. You all have had to do an enormous amount of projecting in the last couple of years, you know, with no real rulebook on how to project during a pandemic. So we thank you for your hard work. Vice Mayor?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Basically, just to echo your comments, especially the last few years, you guys really have had to figure things out that hadn't been figured out before in how to get things done and under what conditions and not knowing and all of that. So just thank you very much for your effort. It's quite impressive. Thank you.
Commissioner?
Yeah, so I always have to say this. I've been through the good, the bad, and the ugly of Finance Directors being a former staff person. So you guys are the A-team. And I say that in terms of your skill set, but even more importantly, your credibility. And that has shown itself so many times in this room, but particularly with Finance Board. And it just, it makes our job so much easier. I mean, obviously, we have lots of budget challenges ahead, but to have such a credible, hard-working, good team makes all the difference. Thank you.
Commissioner?
Yes. You know, I've been through the good, bad, and the ugly also. You know, it was like, well, I don't understand this. Well, Deborah, you're not supposed to. I'm going, what? Even I know I'm supposed to understand it. So I really thank you all. I like your transparency. I think you really do try to make it so people understand it because it is a huge living document. Also, I think you've been displaced during the pandemic, and that's made it harder for all of our employees that are displaced while we're waiting on our beautiful new City Hall. So all congratulations. It's a wonderful achievement, and thank you.
Commissioner?
So I'll just say what everyone else said is great, and thank you very much. Appreciate it. And I really am happy that you're there. Thank you.
We really do appreciate all of your efforts, and please know that they are seen. It's very visible. And I think the word you just heard was transparency. I think those are really important and credible. You couldn't ask for more out of people who are working with all the numbers. So thank you very much. Yeah, I think we can. That's so awesome. All right. Well, go on to citizen input. Now is the time for anyone to come forward and speak to any item that is not already on the agenda. Okay, I don't see anyone. Thank you. Move on to consent agenda, which is the approval of minutes from August 31 and September 23. Board and Committee Appointments, Arts and Culture, Board of Adjustment and Appeal, Board of Finance, Committee on Environmental Quality, Historic Preservation, Local Planning Agency, and Marina Advisory, as well as an inter-local agreement between Penales County and DEP for regulatory program and surveillance fees. Any items to be pulled? All right. Can I have a motion to approve?
No move.
Second?
Commissioner Kynes and Commissioner Franny. Thank you. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. And we'll move to action items. And first on our agenda is the proposed three-year collective bargaining agreement between the city of Dunedin and IAOF Local 2327 effective October 1, 2021. This is Resolution 21-28. Nikki, would you please read that by title only?
Yes, Mayor. Resolution number 21-28, a resolution of the City Commission of the city of Dunedin, Florida, providing for ratification of the 2021 to 2024 collective bargaining agreement between the city and the International Association of Firefighters, Dunedin Firefighters Local Number 2327, for the bargaining unit consisting of the city's firefighters and lieutenants, authorizing the City Manager to sign the collective bargaining agreement on behalf of the city, providing for implementation, and providing for an effective date. This has been reading of Resolution 2128 by title only.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve?
No move.
Second?
Okay. Vice Mayor Gow and Commissioner Torga, thank you. Teresa?
Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioner Teresa Smalling, Director of HR and Risk Management for the city. It is my pleasure to bring before you a three-year contract, which was negotiated between the Dunedin Firefighters Local 2327 and the city. I am very pleased because this took all of two meetings with the union and two executive sessions with the Commission. Before I go into the details of the changes, I just want to go ahead and thank both teams. On the city side, our lead negotiator was Brett Schneider of Wise, Sirota, and Healthman, and was also our EMS chief, Mark Zepetto, and our deputy chief and fire marshal, Michael Handoga, and our Director of Finance, Les Tyler. And also on the city side, those that work behind the scenes, of course, Jennifer, our City Manager, Ross Adair, budgeted man, or Accounting Manager, sorry, and Terry Kearns, our HR and Risk Manager. On the, on the union side, I want to thank President George Trubig, Vice President Lou Staggs, Secretary and Treasurer Chad Dennison, and Rich Pauli, who was the business agent and lead negotiator for the union. Just to go over the, the changes to the contract, there is a market adjustment of 8% that the all bargaining unit members will receive. When we looked at our salaries in comparison to the, our market, our neighboring cities, we realized that there was a shortfall, and the city made the conscious decision to go ahead and make that adjustment for this upcoming contract. The union will also receive cost of living increases of 2% in the ensuing years, year two and year three, and as well as the step plan, increases in the step plan on the union members' anniversary. There is also an article that the, the city put forth that was accepted, working out of classification, that there will now be nine county-certified paramedics who will be designated as field training officers and will receive $1,200 stipend each year that will help the department with training new firefighters coming into the department. Uniforms, there were just some language changes to represent what is already the practice in the department. Duty time exchange, lieutenants will exchange, may now exchange shifts with acting lieutenants and other lieutenants. So as to help with the amount of people who are able to make swaps because there are only 11 lieutenants. So sometimes that makes it hard to do swaps in the unit. At this time, I'd like to take any questions that you may have.
Anybody have any questions? Nope? Okay. Anyone wish to come forward from the public to speak to this item? Anybody from the fire union? Welcome, George.
Good morning. How are you?
Good. How are you?
Vice Mayor, Commissioner. Just real quick, thanks for the speedy on this contract. I think it's a win-win for both sides. Hopefully, we can curb some of the losses that we had over the years due to not having competitive salaries to other departments. Thanks.
Thank you, George. Anybody else? Okay. Come back to the City Commission. Maker of the motion, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to thank everybody. I thought it was a great show of collaboration between both sides. I think it was a just decision, and I look forward to moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Torga?
Thank you. I appreciate all the work that was spent on this by, on both sides. And I'm really, really pleased with the fact that I think we have a competitive situation here for, for our first responders, who we are all very proud of. And so I hope that this sets us forward. We are competitive in the marketplace here. For those who don't know, we do have to compete against the other municipalities for personnel, et cetera. And we have, we have a wonderful department, and now we're very competitive, I believe. So thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Kynes?
Yes, I think you could just say this in a little slogan. I mean, we were all here to stop the loss, stop the loss of really good people because of non-competitive salaries. So I think we all worked well together, and this was well-needed. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner?
Yeah, I mean, you know, to me, it's, as a former HR professional, it's about the market. And I think this is, I'm proud of this Commission. This doesn't come without some fears of the challenges of our budget as we move forward. It was a, it was an expensive step to make, but it's a commitment. It's a commitment to all of you sitting out there as firefighters and lieutenants and paramedics, to the value you are to this community. I've seen some of the good people we've lost because we're not competing, and we need to compete. And, you know, I think it was time we had to step up, and I thank you for your side of the aisle, and thank this Commission for the same thing. But this is the right move, and I'm glad we're doing it.
Thank you. I couldn't agree more. You know, I think we approached it a little differently this year, especially given what we've been through in the last two years. But, you know, we watched, we have watched sort of the, the loss of folks, but also the difficulty in hiring. And that's, that's been a problem because we're not as competitive as others. And interestingly enough, there are, there are local agencies around us that have their own millage, that can afford to pay certain things that we haven't been able to do. And I think we all determined that we couldn't worry about that piece of it, that we just needed to be competitive with what was local around us. And that was important to us. It was important to us, not only for our firefighters, but it's going to be important for us for all our employees this coming year when we do their study. So I think this is just a first step. We appreciate all of the efforts that you all have put forth on your daily jobs in general, but especially in the last two years. And I think we really wanted to show that appreciation. So we're very happy about this contract and hope that you are too. All right. Roll call vote, please. Commissioner Franny?
Aye.
Commissioner Kynes?
Aye.
Commissioner Torga?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gow?
Aye.
Mayor Bajowski? Aye, and that motion passes unanimously. So now we're going to do a signing, right? Okay.
I am. I'll follow you.
Drum roll.
Is there a camera? We need a camera.
Is there Dunedin Brewery beer right after this?
It's a little early.
I know. You're right, it is. I thought George would think of that, though.
What was that?
George, I thought you'd think of the Dunedin Brewery, even if it's early.
Or Lou.
Do you want to give it to him? And so he can get this on? Over here.
I'd like to read it first.
Yeah, she is. Creative.
Lefties are creative.
It's sound.
More often than that, I hope. For good reasons.
I was just going to say, maybe not.
For good reasons.
Thank you, gentlemen. Okay. All right. We'll move on to item 3B, which is the review and approval of the at-a-glance calendar displaying all of our dates. Jennifer and I have reviewed it and found a few conflicts with some holidays. So we're just asking to postpone this so that she can review it with her team and kind of determine a recommendation from them. Because if you've got a Monday holiday and a Tuesday meeting, and people are going to be out of town on a Friday, it's problematic. So they kind of want to take a look at it and make a recommendation for us.
You know, and I also didn't see, usually, we try to give August, you know, some significant time in August.
Yes.
And everybody knows that that is their time.
Right.
And there was nothing. It was just, you know, every month was.
Well, and I, and I think Rebecca, and this, we'll talk about this, I think, when we come back and look at this, but I think what Rebecca has done is not made the assumption.
Right. I understand.
But I, but I do think we do have some kind of history. But I, but I do think we do have some kind of history on certain things, and we should probably just call it a day.
Yeah, I just had a comment, is that, if Deborah was done? No, same thing. I talked to City Manager yesterday about the whole Monday holiday, Tuesday meeting thing, because we don't even have, all our meetings are on Mondays.
Yeah.
So, you know, to staffing, which means we meet on Friday, which means.
It's a problem.
The agenda's not even done.
Right.
And, and I was looking back, this year, we only had that, it was only one time that happened.
Right, so we have a bunch.
This year, it's twice that it happens, but there may be some other conflicts.
Right, and, and.
So I'm glad you guys are on top of it.
In March, we have a meeting on St. Patty's Day.
Oh, yeah.
And we have a meeting on Mardi Gras. So, sorry, not happening. You know, it's like, okay. So there's just some things there, and.
We'd all be parked.
Yeah. But she's gotta review this stuff with everybody, and just see what the team can handle.
So the other issue is, we're asking for a couple of weeks. We may need a little bit longer, and I know that you want to have the calendar as soon as possible, but we need to solidify that trip to Toronto this year as well.
We're looking at June, hopefully. So, yeah, so this will just give them some time to try to make sure we have a pretty solid calendar, and.
Again, I mean, I think, you know, if we sort of know when it's better, you know, it is a better time to be able to get away, that's so much better than us not being here, because we don't want to miss.
Right.
I think we all agree, we want that first meeting in August gone, for sure. But.
Yeah, I think that's been true for years.
Yeah, it has. We started doing it, I don't know, five, six, seven years ago. I don't remember, but it's been a while, it's been quite a while.
Right, and we'll ask for direction when we come back to you, to, to always take that first meeting off, and always have it off the calendar. But, but as you said, Mayor Rebecca needs the direction from the commission.
Absolutely. Okay. So we have to postpone it. Would you like to, do you have a date? We have to do a date certain?
No, there's no advertisement for this one, so you don't need to.
We'll just say postpone until.
I think we can get it done in a couple of weeks. I do. Rebecca and I can sit down and talk, we'll talk to the directors.
So we can put on one of the December meetings?
Well, no.
We can put it, one on the December, one of the December meetings, maybe?
Yeah, that's fine, maybe the first meeting in December.
So you want to postpone it to date certain?
Yeah. I mean, otherwise, it's gonna have to be a supplement. For start, I.
Do you want me to make a motion to postpone to date certain, the first meeting in December?
Yes.
Work session. Yep, okay. Is there a second?
Which is actually November 30th.
November 30th. Okay, sorry. I just wanna make sure everybody's.
November 30th, yeah. Okay. All right.
I stand corrected.
We're gonna get them in before December.
All right. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, thank you. And then the temporary valet parking license agreement, staff's recommending to postpone this until the 16th work session. Jennifer has assured me that there's no issue with the concept, it's just getting all the documents in order.
Yes.
So is there a motion to postpone that to November 16?
So moved.
Okay. Commissioner Kynes and Commissioner Franny?
They should have it.
All right.
They should what?
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
This is between the church and.
Yep. And then we have a bid for the Armor Drive and Magnum Drive water main replacement. Russell, welcome.
Morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. Russell Ferlita, Assistant Public Works Utilities Director and City Engineer. And next to me, I have Matt Woodham, our Senior Engineer.
Welcome.
And he's on the next agenda item, so he came up with me. So here we have bid item number 21-1189, is the Armor and Magnum Drive Water Main Replacement. Funds for this project were budgeted in fiscal year '22, out of the Water and Sewer Fund and the Stormwater Fund. Some basic background on the project, it's in the Fairway Estates subdivision. Specifically, it's on Armor Drive, on Magnum Drive, between Fairway Drive and Haggen Avenue, Davies Avenue and Webb Avenue. This project will replace old-aged cast iron pipe with brand-new PVC pipe, as well as adding eight-inch underdrain along Magnum Drive and the north 300 feet of Armor Drive. As approximately 3100 feet of PVC pipe, as well as about 1500 feet of underdrain, along with all pertinences. This will increase the reliability of the city's potable water distribution system. It will reduce the risk of leakage and water main breaks. The underdrain system will also increase the life of the associated roadway. The notice to proceed for this project is planned for the month of December, and to be complete around April or May. But I want to rest assured, we're not gonna be digging up on Christmas Eve, just so you know. Staff hereby recommend approval of award of this project to MTM Contractors of Pinellas Park, Florida, in the amount of $756,990.80. So with that, I'm here to answer any questions.
So you're not gonna start construction until after Christmas, right?
Correct. We need to issue the notice to proceed, so they can start getting materials. We gave them, I believe, five months or six months for this project, I have to look at the contract. You know, especially now with the crazy prices of materials, PVC being one of them, we want them to lock in their prices and get things ordered, so that way we can, we can really hit the ground running.
Okay.
But I will not let them dig up people's driveways on Christmas Eve.
Okay. Questions?
Yeah, Smear. How long do you anticipate the actual construction?
It really depends on, on how quickly they can move, but typically, they'll be done in about two to three months, with the full force. So this includes all ordering, all approval of materials, is everything, so.
Any questions?
No questions.
Questions? You're gonna do an extensive campaign to notify the residents along the street?
Yes, we've already actually reached out to the Fairway Estates HOA, notified them this project's coming, gave them a quick blurb, gave them the map on where the projects will be affecting, and then also notifying them that they're gonna get an increased water quality, because the cast iron will no longer be there. And hopefully, we'll fix the issue we have with the roadway, where we're getting groundwater seeping up at the low areas there.
But you'll, you'll notify those folks also?
Yes.
Okay, because, you know, sometimes somebody will not hear from their HOA.
Right. Yeah, we'll, we'll do door hangers, things like that as well. That's part of the contract.
Okay. And is, is the road gonna get torn up at all?
Sections of the road will be, yes, and that will be.
And will we be repaving?
That's actually part of this next year's paving contract, so yes.
I'm sorry, say that again?
It's part of next year's paving contract to repave those roads. So what we're going to do is patch the area according to our city standards, in order to have the asphalt done immediately after, and then after that, the paving contractor will come through and completely repave that, those roads.
While I appreciate that, but we're gonna disturb those streets twice by not doing it right after?
Right. I mean, what we're doing is, we're going to increase, we're gonna basically restore what we had there, right? So if we were to do, we're gonna try to put them as close together as we can, the paving contract is actually coming up to be advertised, as advertised right now, it should be awarded. We can try to schedule them right after each other, but they're two different contractors as well.
No, I get it. I just, you know, for the benefit of the residents that live along those streets, it's, you know, when you have that kind of thing going on, it's disruptive. It would just be helpful, I think, to them if we were, whatever we're gonna do, if we try to do it back-to-back right at once, so they're not being disturbed. It's better for them to be disturbed a little bit longer than twice.
Mayor, I don't think that we can commit to that today, but we will, we hear you, and we will do our best.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone wish to give public input on this? Okay. Can I have a motion to approve this contract?
So moved.
Second. Commissioner Kynes and Commissioner Franny, any final contract comments?
Contract?
Oh, thank you. Any?
My first girlfriend grew up on Magnum, and so I reached out to her, and she's very happy. Although she hasn't lived here in decades, but she's very happy.
You were just looking for an excuse.
Your wife is not happy now, however, that you publicly said you reached out to her.
Anybody else, any final comments? All right, thank you, gentlemen. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, now we have the bid for the annual sanitary sewer cured-in-place pipe lining contract. Russell?
I already understood this myself, so I won't do that again. And this one was actually designed and bid by our Senior Engineer, Matthew Woodham. It's bid number 21-1190, is the annual sanitary sewer cured-in-place pipe lining contract. Staff recommends motion to approve or award of the contract to Insituform Technologies LLC out of Chesterfield, Missouri, in the amount of $980,242.04. As you know, the city of Dunedin owns and operates its own wastewater collection system. In order, in an effort to protect and preserve the city's collection system, prevent sanitary sewer overflows, and protect the natural environment, we have enacted an annual sanitary sewer lining program. It extends the useful life of the pipes by 50 years or more. It reduces the operational burden to the lift stations, as well as reducing I&amp;I, which in turn then reduces the loading to the city's wastewater treatment plant. In our effort to optimize our process, we've identified Lift Station Base Number 32 in the Greenbrier subdivision as a good candidate for lining to focus most of our efforts. The notice to proceed for this project is planned for the month of November, and is expected to be complete in May of 2022. Staff hereby recommends approval of award of this work to Insituform Technologies of Chesterfield, Missouri, in the amount of $980,242.04. So with that, we're here to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions for Russell?
Russell, how many, how many projects do you have in, on the schedule sheet to actually do, and how far out do you go?
So we have a planning period of about five years, where we, we line up a lot of the projects. We work closely with finance to try to make sure that we balance what our budget is for the upcoming, I guess you would call that a semi-decade, so the next five years or so. And the reason we do that is, is we can't front-load all of our projects at one time, we just don't have the staff. So without going and hiring consultants extensively, which we still do need to hire consultants for specialties, we do it that way. We also have limited resources in construction management and inspection services as well. So with a lot of the large projects that have been coming through, I know that they've been very tacked, so, so we balance both budget and staff time.
How many projects are there?
I'd say, off the top of my head, without looking, somewhere around 10 to 15, somewhere in there.
And how often do they get changed in the sequence?
Every year, we look at where they're projected, and every year, at least a couple of them move.
And has this one moved?
This particular project, this is an annual project, so we do it every year. So we haven't done it the past year, so this one, what we did is, we actually combined two fiscal year budgets into one. And we did that because of how timing was with the turnover we had in engineering in order to be able to get to this project. And also, we noticed when we started getting to it, that we realized we could probably get a little bit better prices by doing it two years, so we waited a little bit, and just advertised both together for this particular project.
How many other are annual?
We have the annual manhole lining project as well, which is different than the sewer pipeline lining. We also have an annual lift station rehab, that, that has a finite schedule to it, whereas the, the pipe and the manholes are indefinite at this point. We have so many pipes and so many manholes that we have to line, that for my foreseeable future here, and probably my entire career, we'll be doing those projects.
I was gonna say, how many manholes do we have here?
Off the top of my head, I can't recall, maybe 3,000. Yeah, it's in the thousands. We also have in the tens of thousands of pipeline. Actually, Matt, you wanna go ahead, and you know where the numbers are. He ran this up for you.
Thank you. Grand total for total length of pipe within the city is over 700,000 feet. The total manholes, I would have to pull up my spreadsheet, on which I'm very dependent, and I'm sorry, I don't have those numbers. But each one of them has to be lined in sequence with the piping, otherwise, you're, you're running into the scenario that he described with the paving, where you wanna get the infrastructure done before the paving goes down, so you don't come back and disturb the new, the new work. So I do not have the exact numbers on the manholes, but I can get them for you.
Or he says 3,000.
Somewhere around there.
I ask these questions, because when I was talking to the City Manager for the, the review of this, obviously, we go through a full process, and we come up with, and we're taking the lowest bid at this point in time, with people that have done work for us before. And this is just really an important part of our city, an important part of the quality of life, and it's unseen. Manhole, nobody knows how many we have or where they are, they're going down underneath there, and if, if they fail, not good.
Well, we've seen consequences of failure in the city during our tenure here. We had a failure on Milwaukee, where the line started to collapse, and you saw that took about a month in order to repair.
Very expensive, once it fails.
Extremely expensive. So the approximate cost of that project, and I apologize, but off the top of my head, it was somewhere around the ballpark of $300,000. If we catch those lines a lot earlier, and we do our best with, we have our own inspection crews, we have our smoke testing crews, but it's somewhere around a tenth that, to repair it before. So that's why we make such an effort to get this done. And the same with manholes. I don't know if you recall, on the corner of Bell Trees and, was it Patricia? About five years ago, we had a failure of a manhole there. And that project cost us around $200,000 to replace that manhole. It was a very deep manhole, we had to replace some of the pipeline at the time, and then on top of that, we came across a failing stormwater line at the same time, which is not included in that $200,000 mark. But we repaired that. So the, the point of that, of me going on that, a little bit of a rant there, is the fact that we, we make a very strong effort to do the preventative maintenance and inspection. And even as, as good of a job that I believe our crews do, something slipped through, and that shows you the difference of costs of repair versus maintenance.
So our heroes are our infrastructure. Thank you. Thank you for that information, and just giving a rough idea of how many, of how many projects we actually have, and how many, how many manholes we have, and what really happens here. It's, it's a complicated and big project. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Anybody from the public wish to come forward? All right, seeing, hearing, or hearing none, can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Kynes and Commissioner Tonga, any final comments?
I would just like to say, if everybody up here hasn't seen the process for Insituform, it is really interesting. I mean, I thought it was very interesting, just to see how it works. Go out one day when they're doing it.
Yeah, I mean, if you're interested, we can notify you when they mobilize, and you're welcome to go out. The nice thing about the technologies is relatively uninvasive. I mean, you do have to set up trucks with heaters and chemical mixers, things like that, but you're not tearing the road up, and it's only down for a specified number of hours, not days. So it's a nice process.
And I think that, if I may also make a comment, I think that's a great idea. I've, I've, I think everyone here has seen it.
Okay.
But I would love to go back out again, just, just to show the support, and just to watch the process once.
Yeah, we could also send you a video, but we'll make a note to notify you. I'll, I'll notify Paul, and we'll get it through Jennifer to you, to let you know when we're mobilizing, approximately where, and you're welcome to come out anytime. Just make sure you wear a good PPE, like a vest or something, so you don't.
And tha, thank you, Deputy City Manager, but, but I have seen it before, but it really is just more in support of what these guys do. They don't get to give us a brand-new pool, but they give us a, an infrastructure that's really important.
Any other comments?
I'd just say, hey, you know, it's a million dollars, and a lot of things that happen in this city, like today, are a little, sorry, Russell, a little dull, and they're not that sexy, but this is what really is the infrastructure and the important pieces of the city, that it may not be as exciting as the Halloween events, et cetera, it's, but it's the most important thing we do, so, but thank you. We have great staff behind this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, and for anybody watching, I wanna just kind of remind everybody of what happened in St. Pete, five, whatever years ago it was, where they had, you know, sewer running in the streets, and, you know, a lot of folks in the community asked us, well, what's our, what's the position of our, and the, and the condition of our infrastructure? And we took that very seriously. I think we were maybe budgeting $250,000 a year, something like that annually, which, you know, for something like this is really nothing. We doubled that investment annually to line our, our sewer pipes. In this case, it's almost a million dollars, and we're covering an entire neighborhood. Now, it is Greenbrier, and it is an unincorporated Pinellas County. Somehow, we need to get Greenbrier to finally join Dunedin, because, I mean, I used to go to school with people that lived, kids that lived in Greenbrier, and they're still classified as Dunedin. But, you know, it's really great to be able to do this, and hopefully, we'll continue to be able to do this.
I'll, I'll notify Paul, and we'll get it through Jennifer to you to let you know when we're mobilizing approximately where, and you're welcome to come out anytime. Just make sure you wear a good PPE, like a vest or something, so you don't.
And tha- thank you, Deputy City Manager, but, but I have seen it before, but it really is just more in support of, of what these guys do. They don't get to give us a brand-new pool, but they give us a, an infrastructure that's really important.
Any other comments?
I'd just say, hey, you know, it's a million dollars, and a lot of things that happen in this city, like today, are a little, sorry, Russell, a little dull, and they're not that sexy, but this is what really is the infrastructure and the important pieces of the city that it may not be as exciting as the Halloween events, et cetera, it's, but it's the most important thing we do, so, but thank you, we have great staff behind this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, and for anybody watching, I wanna just kinda remind everybody of what happened in St. Pete five, whatever years ago it was, where they had, you know, sewer running in the streets, and, you know, a lot of folks in the community asked us, well, what's our, what's the position of our, and the, and the condition of our infrastructure? And we took that very seriously. I think we were maybe budgeting two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, something like that annually, which, you know, for something like this is really nothing. We doubled that investment annually to line our, our sewer pipes. In this case, it's almost a million dollars, and we're covering an entire neighborhood. Now, it is Greenbrier, and it is an unincorporated Pinellas County. Somehow, we need to get Greenbrier to finally join Dunedin, because, I mean, I used to go to school with people that lived, kids that lived in Greenbrier, and they're still classified as Dunedin. But, you know, it's really great to be able to do this, and hopefully, we'll continue to be able to do this and protect our environment. So we, my point is, is we're very committed, you know, to protecting our environment from some of the things that we have seen happen around us, and so I'm very proud of that.
All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
And then we have the proposed agenda for the November sixteenth work session. Don't think there's any changes there at this point, right, Jennifer?
Actually, Mayor, I did get a request to move item three B to the CRA agenda on December sixteenth.
The... Oh, the...
A care thing?
Well, don't we have to approve it too?
I'm sorry, could you, which item was it?
The parking lot.
Three B, the parking lot.
Parking lease agreement.
I had an email from...
Doesn't both bodies, don't both bodies have to approve it? Both the CRA and the commission?
I'll take a look at the lease, you're talking about for three B?
Yeah.
Because the lease overs a lease yesterday, I don't, I think it's just with the city, but it's within the CRA, but let me just double-check the terms of the lease.
Okay. All right, so we'll just, we'll make a motion to approve, and if you're to change it, you change it, you know?
I'm pulling it up right now, it, it went to me, the final version went to me yesterday, there, and then back and forth for a while before that.
You approve all the other lease agreements?
Hmm?
For parking, the city commission approves the other lease agreements for parking?
I don't remember, to be honest with you. I mean, I wouldn't be surprised if both bodies didn't have to approve.
Right?
You know?
I'll, I'll double-check, I mean, it, it also depends on who owns the, the, I mean...
Well, it's the CRA paying for it, so...
Yeah, we can, I'm, like I said, I'm just pulling it up real quick. So the other...
Why don't you, why don't you look at, why don't you...
Yeah, the, the parties are, is, it's just the city and, and the trustees.
But why don't you take a look at what we've done with the other parking leases, and let's just make sure we're consistent for transparency purposes?
And it's better to leave it on than take it.
Yeah, so let's just leave it there, and doesn't mean you can't add it to the CRA too, you know?
Right, true.
Probably wanna have it there for discussion purposes, anyway. But anyway, okay, so can I have a motion to approve? Yes, ma'am.
And Jennifer, you think two C is actually gonna be ready? That's the prior circle?
I'd like to, to keep pressure on the attorney and, and the property owner to get it done, so yes, I'd like to stay, thank you.
Oh, it's the, the reduction? I spoke with George yesterday too, and they said they should have no issue bringing it back by that date.
Okay, good, good, that's right.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Franny and Commissioner Torga, thank you, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, any opposed?
Oh, wait a minute, aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All righty. Now we'll move, we have no workshop items today, so any commission discussion from anyone?
This is things that I'd like to bring up that we haven't discussed.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, two things, and I talked to, I did talk to Jennifer about this, and, you know, I've been very concerned, and I know Teresa, that, you know, we've sort of had a twin demic with, you know, with COVID and mental health. And I was just wondering how we could maybe get our resources out actively to help our employees to sort of right themselves after a very difficult, once-in-a-lifetime event of this one and a half years of the pandemic. I know we were having little let's-talk things when we first started, and I thought those were wonderful. People really sort of said, you know, I just, I'm not feeling right. And I think it's almost, and I've really thought about this a lot, it's like I, I really hope we're coming down on the end of this pandemic, but now it's almost like it's a post-traumatic stress. It's like for a year and a half, you know, you, you've been under, everybody, everybody has been under tremendous pressure. And, and I also think with our employees, not only have they had that pandemic, twin demic pressure, they've also been displaced, you know, there, until we can get in our beautiful new building. So that was just, I was wondering, you know, if we could, you know, just let our employees know, we certainly can direct them to resources. I know we have early, the EAP, various resources, but that we're aware, and that we hope that they'll reach out if they, if they have, if they're feeling any anxiety and stress. That's my first thing. Now, the second thing, this is for Nikki. And, you know, I have to do all these continuing legal education seminars. So I saw one that was so fascinating, and it was from the Earth Law Center, and it's very new environmental law, and, and it, it basically espouses a, a very cutting-edge concept that the earth has standing. In the past, only corporations or individuals had standing, not rivers, estuaries. And some of the biggest cases are now happening in South America, and they did involve rivers and waterways. But the people that brought these suits were the people that were directly affected by the damage to the river or water bodies, et cetera. And I just wondered, Nikki, I'm, I know you have environmental attorneys that, with, with Bryant Oliver, Bryant Olive Miller, I mean, because it's such a huge group.
We actually don't have an environmental practice group.
You don't?
But I do know some attorneys who've practiced substantially in that area.
I was just wondering, because it is such very new, cutting-edge law, that if there was any application for municipalities, I was just really fascinated with the whole idea that the earth in itself has standing now. I've, I've never, I've never heard that.
I'm not aware of that as a concept applied in Florida law, but I can double-check that for the commission and report back whether or not natural resources have specific standing. It's actually been the bigger topic in Florida about whether pets have standing that I've heard about more recently, and that would be, that's obviously a, a jump from our British common law system, which we came from, not the coloni, same colonization of the international law that, I, but I'm not aware of the CLE. I can go and I can, I can report back to the commission whether or not that's been applied in Florida, but I am not aware of any Florida court applying that a natural resource has standing to, to sue, nor how that would affect the, the, the city. And also extending that to, to a municipality as having, and, and to sue who for what?
Well, I mean, I guess, I was almost, I guess I was almost thinking of some of our water bodies, like, and, and again, this may have no application, and it may be such new law that it's not being followed in Florida yet. As I said, a lot of these were in South America, some of these big riverways, but I just thought we have so many waterways in St. Joseph Sound, and, you know, we've had problems with people dumping in St. Joseph Sound, and, you know, I may be just totally off the, the Richter scale, but I thought it was fascinating, and I wondered if, if there's any kind of precedent in Florida for this kind of law, and that's my only question.
Like I mentioned, I'm happy to look into it for the commission and report back, but I'm not aware of any Florida court applying that state, that same legal standard to give standing to natural resources, but I can double-check.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any commission discussion items?
I do.
Commissioner?
This is a big one, here we go. Been involved with this for many years, and that's called the trail, and the trail at Skinner. I was down there two weeks ago, again, walking the area, looking, seeing, nothing is, nothing has really changed from the environment of, of, of what's happening. And, and nothing has changed, in my opinion, as I observed traffic that's heading east particularly in the morning. And what happens is there's two lines of traffic, and we discussed, I made this point oh, maybe a month or two ago when we were talking about, about Skinner. And it is just incredibly difficult to judge when, when something's gonna go wrong down there, because there's a blockage of, of ability, a capacity for somebody to see perhaps somebody coming, and, well, we had it yesterday again. That's maybe twenty times in, in the last seven years that, that we've had something like this. So I'm not gonna attempt to come up with a solution here, unless somebody asks me what I think we should do, but we need, we need to most clearly, definitely put up some kind of a communication to parties that are, that are on the trail, that are coming to Skinner, to tell them that this is an extremely dangerous intersection as soon as possible. It's, it's, it's gonna happen again, and it will, and it will continue to happen, and, and in some cases, I, you know, I'm not sure that we really, we could say, well, here's the, here's the solution, that it would never happen again, unless you literally put a traffic light up there, and then somebody can still run the traffic light. So let's warn and make it really, really visible for the people that are on that trail to understand that they're coming to a dangerous, very dangerous intersection. I can go into detail about this, I've watched the eyes of the people, I've communicated this years ago. I know I've worked with the city manager a number of years ago, and, and, and asked if we could put the sheriff's car down there, she did. That, that may not be the solution at all to, to assist her, and nor may these signs, but at least we communicated to these people that just because they think a car is stopped, they can go. They better get ready for that car to have the potentiality of moving forward, particularly when they're in a left lane heading east. It's just incre, and, and almost impossible to see things, you, there's too many things happening there. So until we get that Skinner Boulevard worked out with, with the big guys, safety for our residents or for anyone visiting our city is incredibly important. We've had problems, we just had it again. I have to say, stop. We have, we have to stop this. We have, i- if we have to put a barrier up there, make the people lift the barrier up to go across it, I know, I was on Fort Pinellas for four years, I was on the, the, the security task force for the trail for, 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 for Pinellas. I, I know we've looked at this and talked about this and talked about this, well, I'm continuing to talk about it, but I, I'd like to stop talking about it and at least do something more than what we're doing. I know it's problematic, I know it's difficult, but let's do it, let's put something out there to tell these people that you are coming to an incredibly dangerous intersection. I don't know if that helps or not, but at least we did that part of it. We have new cam, do we have, I'm sorry, do you mind just communicating what sort of what we have down there right now?
We do, we have, and they were recently installed, their, their motion detectors so that the lights start flashing yellow when it detects the motion on the trail, and that was really to detect the bicycles moving through and the pedestrians as well, and they are working. If I may, Commissioner, I did send you an email late yesterday, the mayor, Vice Mayor Commissioners with the, the police report on the accident. I think that would alarm the Commissioner, and what alarms staff as well, is that the pedestrian was in the crosswalk and the lights were flashing. The, the young lady driving through the intersection did stop at the trail and then proceeded through the trail and hit the pedestrian, that's in the police report. That's very alarming, because it appears that everybody was doing what they were supposed to be doing.
Other than the sun?
It was the sun, correct.
And it's the same thing happens when you're heading west, it's on set.
Correct.
Same absolute thing, you cannot see.
So, Mayor, you know, and, and Commissioner, I think staff is as alarmed as the commission is, so allow us, if, if we can, to reach out to those who are in control of that roadway, to start talking about whatever we can do to, to address the situation.
I gotta tell you, in response to that, I, I sent that report off to WIT and kinda said the same thing, I've had enough. I, I think we absolutely have to insist to FDOT that we need a red something there. I, I think we've seen enough. I don't care what their thing says for all of the state, and it's gonna affect the design of Skinner, but I think people absolutely have to come to a damn stop there, period. It's the only solution. We've tried every single other thing, and I appreciate the whole signage thing, I think that too, but I'm sorry, we just have to have stop.
I have done this for too long, so I'm not speculating, I've been down there, I spent hours, I have spent hours, more than hours, but hours at a time down there. I used to, well, I was a heavy-duty motorcycle rider, for those of you who don't know this, but I used to tell people, and I used to teach people to watch the eyes of the people in the vehicle, watch their eyes, and if they don't see you, get ready, get ready to either maneuver your bike out of the way or put it down, but watch their eyes. And I go down there and I watch their eyes, there's too much happening there, it's too much happening, both coming, particularly heading east in the morning, particularly, and the visibility, what happens is, is the people think they can now go 'cause the light is on, and these people, they thought they saw them, they don't see anybody, and they start off 'cause somebody's blocking their view. This, this, there's two tragic occurrences here, one, the person who's hit, I hope they're okay, and then the person who was driving, it was totally unintentional. Let's at least tell the walkers right now, I, I, I know signs, I know it's an issue, let's tell them right now, right now, this is a dangerous intersection, we're not gonna stop you, we're not gonna pray for a light to come here, we're gonna ask for the light to come here, but you don't need to know that right now, it's gonna take a long time, but let's put a sign up and tell them this is an incredibly dangerous crossway. Let's try to scare them.
John, can I tack on just a minute? You know, the, one of the things I, I was wondering, and I thought about this before this happened yesterday, was, I, I don't know, the, the motion detector seemed like a great idea, but whenever I go there now, it doesn't seem like a great idea, 'cause it seems like it gives a whole new false sense of security to people. And, you know, sometimes people aren't even gonna cross, and the motion goes, and then they walk the other way, so it's one more way the, you know, when you're stopping as a car, you're like, okay, like, is there somebody there, is there not somebody there? And, and you're right, there's so much going on, you're blocked, so it's, it almost adds a whole nother level of uncertainty. And so I'm almost curious as whether that's actually helped the number of incidences or hurt the number of incidents. But, and I don't disagree with you, Mayor, but I don't wanna say this absolutely has to happen, I think skinny and down of the road, less happening is gonna make a big difference, but I also think the motion detector actually adds more uncertainty instead of less uncertainty. And it'd be interesting to kinda see what the, what the thought process is, it's, because on the pedestrian side, there ought to be stop, push, go pass, versus just this, oh, I don't have to worry, 'cause the motion detector's gonna do it for me, and then the driver's got so much going on, they don't know, is there somebody there, is there not somebody there, can I go now?
Except they weren't stopping and pushing, that was the problem. So this was the way to address it.
That's why I'd like to know what the numbers really are, has it helped or has it hurt or, I, I don't know the answer, obviously, skinning it down's gonna make a huge difference, I think.
Except it's still gonna be two lanes heading west, and two lanes, one lane maybe heading east? I, I don't remember, but it's still two lanes.
I asked on the one lane heading, to have only one lane heading east, to have two lanes heading east, this is gonna just...
Right.
It's gonna continue.
I think it's one lane heading east, but it's two lanes heading west, because you've got people taking a left and people taking a right.
Yeah, that's true.
So, and that's the problem at dusk.
The two lanes heading west are gonna happen after the trail, so coming up to the trail heading west is...
Right, but the problem is, is you're gonna have that, if I remember correctly, you're gonna have that roundabout, which I think is a problem there, and, and you're gonna be consistently moving, and then you're gonna come to there, and those lights are gonna flash, then what are you gonna do? The roundabout is, is intentionally there to keep traffic moving, but we need people to stop, you know? So I think it's gonna fight each other, I think it's gonna encourage people to keep moving.
Mayor, what about...
With a skinny lane, you know?
What about the raised crosswalk idea that they're now using, you know, that we went round and round about on Douglas, on Douglas, which is only two...
Yeah, and I don't, I don't know what, I don't know what the answers are, but I'm just...
but I'm just saying, I think we have to seriously look at something different because what's there is not working and we have to reexamine, maybe, we have to ensure that what we have there at the trail is, for the new plans, is really going to help it.
If I may, I brought this up for two reasons. Number one, fine, let's look at this. What do we do long-term? Is it one lane coming? Is it raised crossways? Is it a stoplight there or what? But right now, let's put us, I've watched the eyes of the people that are, not the cars, the people that are walking. And you watch the eyes of the people that are riding their bikes. They don't look anymore. They're done looking. They're done looking. Have you ever, you ever watched a bullfight? Sorry to bring up a bullfight. You get ready and if the thing starts to move, you, you better start moving yourself. So, look, I'm not blaming anybody that got hurt there and I'm not blaming anybody that got hit, but let's at least put a warning up for those people now. There's too many of them now. It's been almost 20 of them now since I've been talking about this.
I think signage is okay. It's not that difficult to do that.
Yeah, please.
Mayor, what I would like to do is that, and this is not our road, obviously all of you know that. And, and the design for Skinner is, is way, right, and not our trail. And the, um, and the, you know, the design for Skinner is, is, you know, that, that horse is running down the track. It's out of the gate. That said, um.
There's also the overpass.
Right. Because in this situation, when you read that report.
That'll take 10 years to happen.
What's, what's really bothersome is that the car approached the, the crosswalk and stopped. The pedestrian was in the crosswalk with a flashing light. So the sun was a factor, most certainly in this incident, but there are other incidents. We need to reach out to the entities in charge of that roadway and, and the trail and talk about signage and also to reinforce with a bicyclist that they need to stop at the, at that area. So, you know, there are lots of different things at work here, but I think that, that, you know, first of all, you know, as the city of Dunedin, we need to, we need to approach as elected officials and staff, work with them on the signage. I'm not sure how we can specifically address the sun because I did talk to, uh, North District Commander Joe Garrett's yesterday. He watched the video. Um, he, he said that the sun was definitely issue. You can see it on the windshield. So, um, the, the, the young lady who was involved said she did not see the pedestrian at all. And so that's very, very alarming for all those who use it. I use it all the time as well. I jog, you know, through there and I always wait for the eyes, but the problem is.
You have the sun.
Well, you can't see the eyes because of the sun, you know? So we need to address it. I am as concerned as you are and I hear you very clearly.
Please put something up there as fast as we can. At least we tried to tell somebody. At least we tried. It's not going to, I'm not saying it's a fantasy at all, but let's put something up there because so, for how many years now, we continue to talk. And the thing is still there. The only solution is to go under, over. I remember I went to the building with the bower that builds under the road and I went to the people that build over the road. And so that's the only solution to prevent this from happening here. But in the meanwhile, in the meantime, but in the meanwhile, it's been almost 20 now.
Well, and we have more incidents there than we do at Curla Road.
I watched.
My knowledge. That's crazy.
Just so the commission knows this, I stood at Skinner Road one time and Douglas and was watching. And I watched a, a lady, doesn't matter. I watched a car hit a guy on a bicycle in the crosswalk. She looked at him. She looked away. He thought he saw her, so he started to go and she went and hit him. I stand her right there, standing right there. Now, what does that tell us? That tells us that, that we better always be very, very careful, know we're in a dangerous intersection and while we know that one's really, really dangerous. So let's just tell the people, watch them go, just go, go down there, just, if you don't, if you don't want to put a sign there, go down there and just watch the, the bicycles flying through there. They think the, the car is going to stop. The people walk because they think, they think, I was in California in 19, when I was stationed in California in 1971, you stepped off the road. Every car stopped because if a car even looked like it was going to touch you, you, they lost their license. Okay? And so everybody is very afraid. I looked both ways, having been to Australia and having been to the United States, I looked both ways every time I crossed the road and then I'm expecting something to go wrong when I cross the road. Here, we got people crossing that thing from all parts of the world, but some of them don't even know this because this gentleman probably did. Tom, I won't say it's, it doesn't matter. So he, he probably knew, but we have to, let's put a warning out there. But I'm sorry, I, I know I'm talking a lot, but I've, really, I, we have to do this.
I think we can do that.
If I may, Commissioners, um, actually Joan Rice contacted us, uh, early October. She's working with Fort Pinellas. They actually set some cameras out, uh, between Cafe Racer and, and, um, the hotel to monitor the intersection. So they, they had those cameras set up for, I believe, a week or two weeks. So I think they're actively in the process of looking at what, what can possibly be done in that area. It actually happened to coincide about a month before this incident occurred, this most recent one. But the county is actually, actually looking at it and, you know, to everyone's point, as Jennifer mentioned, you know, we're in a unique situation here where the roadway's not ours, the trail's not ours. So we have to kind of rely on these other agencies as to what measures can be put in place, but we'll continue to work with them.
I'm going to rely on my local government right now to put something there to tell these people, be careful, this is very dangerous. Sorry, I, enough.
I think we can do that.
Can I just?
Sure.
Were, were you saying, you're, were you saying the red flashing lights?
I, I wasn't saying one way or another. I was just saying some way of making people to stop.
But that's been a big discussion.
I know.
Whether the yellow, which is sort of cautious or just red, just stop.
Well, that's my point. We went the opposite way. We did a motion flashing thing that's like, oh, don't worry, it's going to go on automatically. Just keep on walking.
Well, because.
That's what I think.
I mean, I hear you, except we had years and years, because we've only had this for, what, two years or something?
Hasn't been that long.
Three. We had years and years and years of accidents because nobody was pushing the buttons. So this was, you know.
I got you, but that may go back to.
And don't forget.
Getting attention, like Commissioner Tonga was saying. Pinellas Trail in Dunedin is the number one consistently, every month, every year, number one highest usage of the trail in the entire county. It's Dunedin. Great for us. I mean, it's a great amenity, but, you know? And trust me, there are fights all over the county about getting those overpasses, you know? So.
Well, I wonder if, you know, and Commissioner Tonga, I'm glad you brought it up today, but I just wonder if by next meeting, we couldn't get some type of an update on what the thinking is, um, at that next level? I mean, I'm not, regardless of the warning issue, you know, what, what are the powers that be who do own that piece of the trail thinking that we need to do?
By your Thursday meeting or next work session?
Next work session.
Okay. That would, yeah, I need a little bit more time.
You know what? Why don't we ask, uh, WIT to come to our work session during the informational item? And let's, let's have a dialogue. I think that's the best thing to do because he's going to be our biggest and best advocate. And, um, I think we can, I think we should also invite, um, District Seven Secretary, which WIT can do. And whether it's the next meeting or the one after, you know, depending on his schedule, I think we get those two people in a room and get them on camera and get them where we're all talking. Doesn't mean you can't have conversations on your own, Jennifer. I don't mean it that way. But maybe WIT can bring some information, you know? But I, I, you know, it's kind of like how we've talked about having our law enforcement work session, workshop or whatever. I think this is the same thing. You know, we're just done. We're done. We're spent. Something has to happen and, and it has to happen quickly. And y'all, we're putting you on notice right now.
Well, in the short term then, Mayor, if, uh, if I may, we will work with the county as far as signage on the trail itself.
Yeah, yeah, of course.
Because that would be the county. And then we can try to, to address this as far as long-term solutions go.
Yeah, and it's, I, I think it's important to have the, the Sec- District Secretary here.
About me?
Yeah, yes.
I'm sorry. Just as an avid bicyclist and a huge proponent of multimodal transportation, uh, I can't disagree with anything here, but the entire conversation has been on the pedestrians and the bicyclists and the trail as opposed to car drivers. And I think it's an equal responsibility. It goes back to, uh, the most recent incident, the, the, the runner was in the crosswalk. The lights were flashing and this is actually just an unfortunate accident and accidents happen. But I don't want to go, I want, I don't want to put it out there that bicyclists and pedestrians are bad. They need to be warned. They need to be educated, but actually the education is across the board for everybody. And, and so we need to, in addition to the signage and things that we're talking about, we also need across the entire county educational PSAs that, that just warn everybody about traffic and how to get along. I can't post anything pro bicycle on the Facebook page without just getting bombarded with how rude and arrogant bicyclists are. And we have a lot of driving, and I, I can't say there aren't bad actors out there on bicycles and pedestrians, but there's bad actors everywhere. And it just seems to me that we have been so car-centric for so long that there is just this entitlement upon car drivers and anything bicyclists do, they're in the wrong. And so I don't, I don't want to lean toward anti-pedestrian, anti-bicyclists where actually as a, as a community with the traffic and parking issues we have, that's the way we need to go. And so I don't, I don't want to give car drivers any opportunity to say bicycling is bad is, is my only concern.
I don't disagree with you at all. I see it all the time. You look at any of the Dunedin groups on Facebook and soon as you, every time that you talk about the trail with anything, it is throwing the bicyclists under the bus completely. And, you know, I mean, the whole purpose of the trail was to give them their own place to, to do both, you know? Walk, run, bike. And I have been long asking WIT, which the board approved and it still hasn't happened, for consistent crossings at the trail countywide. It's just like having consistent, um, school, uh, zones, you know, consistent, um, miles per hour. Cause all over the county at one time, they were all different. And so can't make that happen because nobody wants it to happen. Not in my city. I don't want you to have to stop. I mean, it's, there's a lot of different things going on, but I don't disagree with everything you just said.
Okay, Jennifer. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you, Commissioner, for bringing it up.
Yeah, and, and again, again.
Signage.
Please, this is not the first time we've discussed this amongst everybody and then it always comes back to it's not ours and I understand all, put a sign, put a sign up there and tell the people that you're entering the most dangerous intersection in the United States of America. Only just say dangerous intersection or whatever you want to say. But get something, let's get something up there and it just makes me think that, whoa, I need to be careful. If you didn't, if you were in a country where they drive on the other side of the road and somebody doesn't tell you to look both ways and you came from a country where you drive on the opposite side of the road, you'll look the wrong way every time. Well, let me tell you, when you cross the road, look both ways every time, always. So it's just education. I just don't want you to get hurt. That's all. Can we, if we, let, can we please put a sign? Please do something.
I think she said yes.
Yeah.
She said yes.
Thank you.
We're good.
Awesome.
Any other commission discussion items? Well, uh, first of all, I was on my Measmoreton Plant meeting this morning. I'm on the Clinical Accidents Committee and, um, I can't say numbers because we're not supposed to do that, but the news on the COVID in the, in the system is, is really good. I mean, they're way down and especially in any kind of critical situations, way down. Um, and actually that meeting has been, that meeting has met virtually for, I don't know, like a year, year and a half, and we're going to have our first in-person meeting next time. So that says something about the hospital system, um, which says something about where we are as a community with COVID, which is good news, not to let our guard down, but, you know, it's good news. Jennifer, on that note too, I was just wondering, like in terms of our, our staff and customer service and people being back in the offices, where, where are we at with that? Is everybody back in the offices now? Do we still have hybrids going on or what, what is?
There's still some hybrid going on in those areas where they don't have, uh, space and that would be in human resources and finance, uh, and some in community development where they're still stepping, uh, sitting one on top of the other. I did, um, ask that we put an, an item on the next department head meeting, which is tomorrow, to discuss the full, uh, back to work and full reopening, um, of, of all departments in the city as well. So we, we are working on that.
Cool. Very good. The only other thing, I was just going to update the commission just briefly is, um, I think, uh, Jorge, we've had a couple of meetings with Duke Energy and we have another one next week. Uh, they were, are working on a report as we've, uh, beat them up on. We don't want a dog and pony show. We want, you know, specific to our issues. And, um, so they've been doing a draft and working through with that. At the point after next week's meeting, probably we'll get something on the agenda for them to do a presentation to the entire commission. So, and, uh, again, it's, uh, kind of more Dunedin specific. So hopefully it will provide us with information that will be helpful as we move forward. And, uh, and then obviously the commission can tack on any of their concerns at the same time. So, um, just wanted to give an update.
The week after, the 16th.
16th, okay. The week after. So, um, that's it. That's all I have right now.
Thank you. Anybody else, commission discussion items?
I do.
Okay.
The golf club. I, I was just, I, I wanted to bring it up and talk to y'all about it and then perhaps turn this way in a second. But, um, I just want to make sure that we're getting, um, really good solid input on the golf club from the residents of the city. That they understand what's happening. I know we are all so close to it and certainly staff would be so close to it, they'd say, what do you mean? So we're talking about all the time. But just that they have input, just to make sure that they have input as to, as to what's, what some of the options are and what some of the things that we're working on. So I thought maybe also just get an update from you to see where we are.
Sure, absolutely. So the, uh, Board of Directors of, of the golf club have, have reviewed the, um, the sustainability study. Staff's recommendation is, I believe, number four, which is the hybrid. That has also been scheduled for the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee and the Board of Finance. I don't have the dates for you at this point. And for the City Commission at your work session on November 30th, I believe it is.
Is it a workshop item, an informational item?
It is a workshop item, yes. Yeah, we're not looking for action.
Voting, we'll hear all of that and then be voting separately.
Right. And we, yes.
Okay.
The sustainability study itself, I need to double check and see if it's on the website. It should be, we'll be more than happy to put it on the website and, and seek, uh, public input. Certainly the public will see it on your agenda at a work session and certainly will be made available to, um, the public, you know, when we, when we advertise those, the Board of Finance meeting and Parks and Rec Advisory Committee meeting as well.
I would, I would like to, I, I really would like to make sure that before we get into anybody voting on anything, because obviously, you'll vote when you're asked to vote, but that, but that they also, perhaps, some have some capacity or some capability of, of getting input from, from how those other folks think. And, and when we get a recommendation from the Board of Finance, it's not whether they like golf or not, it's whether the financials are there, and the Parks and Rec are, whether they think that now that gets broader. And it would seem to me like they would have to have some kind of an input.
Right.
An understanding of, perhaps even of golf itself, but golf and, and how golf really relates to our community here.
Yeah, and the Board of Finance has seen it already.
Yes.
And it's coming back to the Board of Finance again, so.
Thank you.
Well, and I think also, I think it's important, I know it's a different situation, but I, just as a reminder, the actual sustainability report included surveying of the public and what their feelings were about the golf club and all of that. Now, it doesn't talk about all the different plans, it just talks about, you know, all of that. So, they were, the public was extensively surveyed in that way. But I, I just think, you know, making sure that we do enough public notice and.
Sure.
Was the public actually, I thought it was just users of the golf.
No.
Not the whole general public, but maybe I'm mistaken.
I thought it was the general public.
I, I thought, I thought it was just some of the people that were using the club.
That actually used it, that's what I thought.
And, and they, and they said this is.
Members, non-members.
They didn't say it this way, but I think they said something like, this is certainly not statistical, and this is certainly not to the depth that we would go, but here's just some indication from some of these folks, which the minute you hear that, you always have to, you always have to be careful when you read that. That's my input, recollection.
Okay.
Anyway, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, City Clerk update, Rebecca.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one quick thing. Back at the August 17th work session, I did mention bringing the Resolution 1606 to the first meeting in December, when we talk about some of the other procedures and, and different things for the yearly meeting. But I'm, I'm requesting that we actually move that to the December 16th work session as a workshop item. There is an opening there, because I feel like it's more of a discussion item, and we can get, dive a little deeper than it being an action item. So, I just wanted to get consensus that, that that was okay with everyone, because it's not, per the charter, it's not required. It was just something that I wanted to bring forward at that first meeting in December. So, the 16th was the first open workshop that I thought we can discuss it a little further.
Sounds good to me.
Would that also be a time that we can talk about the length of our minutes, and whether we need to think about not needing to have verbatim minutes anymore, that, you know, the world has changed?
This isn't, this is board and committees. This is not, this is not.
So, when would?
Our, ours will be the rules, when we do our rules and procedures.
Okay, so that would be in just, in.
December as well.
Resolution 20-40, actually, is the commission's rules and procedures, and that is on the first meeting in December agenda. So, I'll make a note to make sure.
I just wanted to make sure we covered that. We brought it up, we were going to talk about it, but I wasn't, yeah, gotcha.
Because one of the other things that we can talk about, which goes to the calendar, kind of what Jennifer had mentioned earlier, because in the Resolution 20-40, it does state when I should be scheduling for that calendar. So, when, if we have some consensus, then we can maybe.
Adjust that, too.
Adjust that as well.
Sure.
Everybody else okay with that? Okay, anything else?
That was it, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Rebecca. City Manager update?
I had a lovely vacation, thank you. Thank you for giving me the time, and that's my update.
And she missed us.
Yes, I did, immensely.
Nikki, any updates?
I, I have one update from a report, from the report that I gave to the commission a couple of weeks ago, since we have a few minutes. The, the commission, you may recall, when we were doing our annual report, we also reported we were hopeful that the ORC would be coming back to your November, second work session in November. There, they are, I just wanted to give a brief update on some of their efforts, because as you noticed, it's not on your agenda for next week, but that's not because they haven't continued to do their good work. In fact, they're largely down to a final draft report that is just needing a final vote. The last month, and the month before that, the committee did not have a full member, a 100% participation. So, in, in fairness to all of the work that they have all put in since 2018, the chair wanted to provide an opportunity for all of the members to be at a meeting to vote on the final report. Now, the clerk's office is still working out whether that will be able to happen between November and December, and if it's not, then the final report may just have to come from, from a quorum. And, and all of the committee members have still been provided with the report and are aware, are aware, too, of the various avenues for them to be able to attend if they do desire to have 100% attendance. But I'm bringing that up to let you know, to, obviously, as an update into when you will receive the ORC report, which at the latest date would still be in January, which is before your deadline that you gave to the ORC of February of 2022. But that also kind of raises an additional question that I just wanted to bring up to the commission for you all to think about, and this is not to put anybody on the spot tonight, or today, or anything like that. But obviously, with the, with ORC now going into 2022, potentially, by giving, they're going to give you your final report in 2022, you technically, right now, have under, you have two committees under, under your charter that meet to advise you on these issues, as you're aware of. You have the Ordinance Review Committee, which is just about to complete its work, and you have the Charter Review Committee, which completed its work in 2017, late 2017. Under the charter, those are both appointed every five years. So, part of what I'm bringing to you is, we're coming to the time of that five years of Charter Review Committee. ORC still isn't done and may not be done until 2022. And it, that's a, this is a tight window that you all are operating in, and these are, these are additional services that are provided, not just by my firm. I mean, it's just, this is, it's an in-depth process, as you can see, both from the, the length of time, you know, that, and I know there were a few other things in the OR, this is not on the ORC, there were a few things that, that affected their work with the hiring of the new Community Development Director and things like that. So, it's not that they took too much time, it's just these processes take time. And so, I don't know if the city has ever historically been in this position, where you have both of them running and appointed at the same time, and are overlapping, and are kind of, and, and so, it just, I wanted to bring it up to the commission to see if there is, if that, if, if that's the route we want to continue to, to operate in, then we'll bring back a recommendation, you know, a recommendation for you to begin appointing the Charter Review Committee, and we'll begin that process now. We are coming into the time period when Rebecca got notice that there, for the ability to do an election next year, if instead, the commission wanted to consider staggering the ORC and CRC timeframes, or, or something of that nature. But again, that is a larger discussion. I'm not trying to put anyone on the spot tonight. It's just, these timeframes are now overlapping, and, and they seem to be kind of based on, you know, and now with ORC reviewing both the code and the land development code, I mean, that's a tight timeframe to be reappointing every five years. And so, I'm just kind of bringing it up as an observation. This is a charter thing, so this would be a referendum issue. So, it's just something to think about, and I, and I want to just bring it up, because especially, you know, when now we were, we were trying to get ORC done early, at least so we would be done in 2021, but now we're going to be going to 2022. So, we'll, so we'll be appointing an ORC in 2022, and then, and then again, or they'll be done in 2022, and we'll be appointing a new one in 2023. So, it's, it, these are really tight timeframes to have completed a process, and then be pretty much initiating a new one.
It's a lot of work on the team.
Well, and I, and I was going to say, I mean, I can't speak to the, to the burden, or to, you know, to the resources that staff invest into these processes, but I know that they are extensive. I know that they are thoughtful and prepared for each of these processes, and they're, and they're extensive. So, I just want to be, you know, before we just come and bring before you, okay, time to do another CRC, I just wanted to point out this observation, because it seems like it's, it's, it's pretty onerous to be completing both processes on the same timeframe, in the same schedule.
And with an election coming up.
Yeah. I, I'll tell you, I do think it's worthwhile looking at timeframes and ensuring that they are staggered. I know that the last couple of years, they've been pretty tight together, and I, I think we should look at.
And for your, I was gonna, I failed to mention, too, the volunteers, too, your volunteer boards are the ones that invest the most time into this. And so, if you can imagine, you know, investing four years of your life, and then the next year, all someone, you know, it, it's like, all that work, and then it's good for one year, and then we're just going to go and do it all over again. It kind of, you know, the, the hard work that the volunteers have put into, I wanted to comment on that, because they're really the, the boards that are paying really, really close attention to this, and you don't want them to feel like, well, what does it matter, someone's going to come in tomorrow and just do something different, or, you know, or, or something.
I think it would be worthwhile to understand what's happening in other cities around us and all of that, as far as timeframes, you know, like, is it every five years, is it every 10 years, you know? I mean, I know 10 years is common as well.
Yeah, I asked around at FMAA last year, because that's the, or, over the summer, just to kind of try to get a gauge. There was actually Charter Review presentation at that CLE, and so, I just was trying to do some empirical digging, and I wasn't able to find anything concrete, but I think you're, I mean, you're absolutely right, Mayor, is an overwhelming majority that either had, you know, if they had an ORC and CRC, they were staggered, or they did them every 10 years, or allowed for certain gaps of preparation time in between. The, the, the only, I mean, some of the prevailing guidance was that there is absolutely no way to get these done in, like, two-year cycles. But, you know, so, so five wasn't out of the question. It, it's a little bit unique, too, though, because you're stagger, you're, you also have an ORC, which not every community has. That's another.
Not a lot of people do have the ORC, do they?
No.
No, it's, it's more rare than a CRC. I would say most charters have a Charter Review Committee function. I, I mean, I know Largo's is 10 years. I think, I, some are just upon, you know, upon request from the commission. So, if the commission feels like it's time to do a review, they can initiate a review, but there's not a time period. And it really runs the gauntlet. I mean, it's your charter, it's your constitution. So, that's the other thing, too, is it has to be what the citizens want. But that's also why I want to just bring up the question for the commission, for you all to think about and to consider or vet, because, you know, you do have some great volunteers who have now put in four years of their life on ORC, and are now, you know, and we're going to go, okay, great, thanks for the report in 2022, now let's appoint your replacements six months later.
We just had our charter in 2020. We just.
We just received the report from the 2016 committee in 2020, correct?
Yeah.
So, you would be appointing in 2021, technically, even though you just got the results of your Charter Review in 2020. So, I, you know, I'm not, that's not a legal concern necessarily, how someone feels, but I understand, but, but in your, but when you have a volunteer board that's just put in from 2016 to 2020, to give you a report that's current and that you're considering, to go and have to replace a, you know, do a, start a new process, the very, you know, six months from then, is, is, you know.
So, would it be okay for everybody?
Challenging.
If Nikki maybe provided us, Nikki can work with Rebecca, maybe provide us.
Maybe we can break up some.
With some data, and maybe even some thoughts on what could solve it, and make it a little bit, make it flow a little bit better. And maybe it's an informational item, a workshop item, for us to have a dialogue about. I mean, it doesn't mean we're going to do anything with it. It just means.
Yeah, no, I think that's, I would.
Is that okay with everybody?
To be able to have that, if, if, you know, if you're interested. Again, this is, I know this is new, and, and we were hoping just to try to kind of front-load everything and stick within timeframes that are under the charter. But it is, you know, I think you all can see, it's, it's been, it's a little tight, so.
Yeah.
We'll look at that. I'll work with Rebecca, we'll put together some data, and then you all can, can continue to further consider it. Because like you mentioned, Mayor, it may just be an, an ability to say, well, the appointment can be from when you last received the information and current report.
Yeah, I mean, who knows? It might be that. I mean, we're not saying we're going to change it or not change it, but at least we can look at it and have a dialogue, an educated dialogue.
And any cha, and any change, again, would be a change where you have a refer, it's not, this is not totally a city commission decision, because it's a charter question, but it's one that, you know, is important that, that you all consider, I think.
It's our own Charter Review.
Well.
There you go.
It's your, yes, it's your own, and, and those, those happen, too, so.
Yeah, okay. All right. I think you got the direction you needed.
Thank you, yes. We'll go ahead and get that scheduled for future one, after Rebecca and I are able to get together.
Okey-dokey. Okay, final commission comments on liaison things and all of that. Vice Mayor, anything you want to report?
Uh, nothing to report, other than the high school is putting on Elf the Musical, December 2nd through the 4th.
Oh, that sounds good.
What is it, December 4th?
December 2nd through the 4th.
Do they have matinees, too?
Uh, they are going to have a Saturday matinee, which is the 4th.
Oh, that'd be very cool. My kids would like that.
Yeah, for sure.
Is it?
No, I mean, the only thing is, obviously, there's a couple Blue Jay things that we're looking at, in terms of we have to, we have a deadline on when to pick our games for, you know, that we're going to be at for the suite next year, and then, you know, the trip, and so.
And the Welcome Back event, let's not forget that.
So, yeah, so I'll, I'll give you a, a good update in the next two weeks, to, to see where we're at with all that. I had one question about next time's agenda, the legislative, it'll be our legislative priorities that we're talking about, right? We're not going to be looking at what they did last year. Because didn't we have a couple of legislative ones that we were going to do, a little deeper dive of the effects on staff? Was I, am I drinking?
We did, yeah, there were some of those, and, and we will consider those. So, we're starting to form your legislative platform, and we'll bring the Florida League of Cities and whatever they have, and the counties for it as well, and just start to form that. It's a workshop item.
I think our question, too, is that this is setting priorities for the upcoming session. The legislative memos and the, any changes that are needed out of the memos that came out of last session, we have our, also continue to meet with the different department heads that are affecting it. There are two or three ordinances or changes that we have sent to the Community Development Department, or to Public Works, or FIRE to review. So, we've, we've continued to work on those, implementing changes, and, but I'm not sure, I don't want to speak for Jennifer, her staff, on where they are with some of the.
Well, that was my question. I thought we were going to have some follow-up on some of those key things. Would you be ready to do that?
Sure, we can give you an update on where we are.
Yeah, I mean, it would be helpful to know impacts of prior legislation, as we look at what we're looking at.
We can let you know where we are in the process.
That would be great.
If you need anything from that spreadsheet, just get with me, and we can make sure we coordinate on that.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, I, I think that's all I have.
Okay. Commissioner Kynes, anything?
Um, yes, I, you know, I, I did talk to Jennifer about this, and I was just going to ask that she give us an update on the character overlay. 110 people showed up. It was great. Didn't you think it was great? I mean, I know you were, Commissioner Torga, I mean, people are really fired up, so we'd really like to know, you know, have a game plan of where we're going to go. There were some really interesting questions asked that I think Kim Lee Horn with staff might have to sort of grapple with. I wanted to thank the staff. I thought George and Molly and Francis did a fabulous job in getting people out, and I wanted to thank them. So, you, you and I just spoke about this, and maybe when you can get your staff together, you can sort of direct us on next steps.
Yeah, and, and I'm sorry I missed that meeting. I heard that it was a very good meeting.
It was fabulous.
And very well-attended, which is very, very good to know. We're very happy about the attendance. The, I do need to get with George and Community Development staff. It is, it is scheduled for, or should go to LPA if, if we're to keep within the timeframe that we need on the zoning in progress. I asked the Commissioner for a little bit more time to sit down with staff and put together those, those milestone dates in moving forward with the overlay, and to how we're going to address some of those questions. I haven't had a chance to do that, because I was spending my day with all of you yesterday, so.
Absolutely, I, I understand. But then, I also wanted to, I, I got to take my grandchildren to see the Witches of Dunedin, and then Lucy spent the rest of the day trying to figure out if she could do the witches dance. So, I, I just wanted to say, you know, thank you to them. They've raised about $6,000 for the Coutserias Scholarship Fund under Parks and Rec. And so, I think, you know, we all owe them a huge debt of gratitude. Then, we're going to be having, and I know that the church is asking, if you haven't let them know if you can be at the, I cannot say it, the Centineniorial, whatever.
Descent.
Yes. Right. You know, if they're going to be able to attend, you know, please let them know at the church, and they've got a whole big thing, a lot planned. The last hurrah is Saturday night, so I know the History Museum has been working very diligently on having a huge fundraiser for this beautiful mansion that, at some point, will not be there. Also, I met with Jennifer, and we had a great discussion on the digitization project, and it is really moving along with our partnership with USF. We have a strong partnership with USF that does forensic digitalization. I mean, it's amazing. So, we had a great meeting, made me feel really good. We're, we're moving, and I think that's all that I have to report. I'm not trying to, the DFAC, I know they've started some new classes. It's time, if you want to sign up. And I think that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Any liaison comments, Commissioner Torga?
Yes, I do. So, this is a, the chance for us to make, make comments, correct?
Mm-hmm.
And some announcements. I did want to make just a, a comment to staff regarding, regarding the overlay. The most curious questions that, that I got, or that I received, that I, that I thought were most noteworthy to tell you about, is that there were several people that were very concerned about the length of time that this has been going through. So, it's just input. And then, the second one was, there were some people that were confused as to what's. as to what was actually happening, what were, what were the outcomes, and, and so I think that would be good, good that we, we get that down so that we understand what some of those are as well, so when we're talking with the folks, we're, we understand at least some direction or some, some of the issues that, that might, might be beneficial to us. So, November, November is a, a wild month, we just started it yesterday, we got our City Manager back to work, and, and then we get cake today, so that, that's wonderful.
Happy birthday.
And then, and then we start with November 10, the Marine Corps Birthday, and then we have November 11, if I may just digress, just for a moment, this is very, very important stuff. Stormy voyage home, I'm reading from my American Legion magazine, this is just from the editor's note, "In December 1920, American Legion founder, founding leader, Hamilton Fish of New York introduced legislation that would deliver the unknown soldier, soldier to Arlington National Cemetery less than a year later. Legion was involved at every step of the journey, from participation of the selection of the fallen hero through the tombs dedication on November 11, 1921. The trip from France to the United States would be carried out on the USS Olympia, now dry docked, on display at the Independent Seaport Museum in Philadelphia, the last of the U S Spanish-American War fleet still in existence. This is a story of Olympia's harrowing trip across the Atlantic and how the unknown soldier was protected and delivered in the face of a historical storm. This story is absolutely incredible, a Marine Corps captain who later became a two-star general in World War II, his comment was, he expected to perhaps even lose the body because of the storm, lose the ship too, but he said if the body went over, he was going over with it, because he knew he didn't accomplish his job, 38 Marines were on this ship. Does anybody remember the date that we ended up with our brand-new hurricane pass?
Uh, October 25th, 1921.
So you heard when this started off, and these guys were in that hurricane, that very same hurricane, and almost lost, that, almost lost some Marines off that ship as well, harrowing story, but incredible for the unknown soldier, this year they're allowing individuals to place flowers, et cetera, on the unknown soldier up in Washington, D.C. Then it sort of continues with a couple of exciting opportunities for all of us, we have November 13, November 13 is the wine and blues, rock and roll, we have November 20th Celtic Festival, also on November night 17, the Rotary North Club will be celebrating the 50th year anniversary, 50 years meeting at our golf club, and remember, we're not too far away from 100 years at our golf club in 1927. So November, November also has one of the greatest events in the world, and that's called Thanksgiving, starts our entire history of the United States, actually, and in Texas today, where we, again, become very family-oriented and with the most important things of freedom in what we have in this country, so November is always hot for me, everybody have a great November, just wanted to let you know just a little bit about that. Now, why am I wearing purple? Because November is Alzheimer Awareness Month, okay, there's a separate day, but this month, and this is a focus, for example, on my Rotary Club, for, for what we're doing with, with cash for this year and what we want to fund and what we want to continue to fund, but five, more than 5 million people in the United States alone have this incredible dangers, and it is a disease, and it's, and it is a disease that will kill you, and we always talk about the caretakers of the, of the, of the veterans that survived, that have caretakers, and how many of them there are and how many are affected by those that are alive, and that goes also with those that have the Alzheimer's, so my purple is representing Alzheimer Week, it's a combination of red, anybody know that, combination of red and blue, but that's a whole nother story, but, there we go, November, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, well, I was going to talk about the Celtic Festival, but you stole my thunder there, Commissioner.
You can do it.
So anyway, yep, we're back to those events.
No, art harvest, I forgot.
Oh, yeah, there you go, art harvest is this coming weekend, Saturday and Sunday, right?
Mm-hmm.
With extra parking at the high school.
Mm-hmm.
And trolley down there, so, yeah, we have a lot going on this month and next month.
Opening back up, yep.
But I also wanted to remind everybody that our American Recovery Act Town Hall meetings, next week, Tuesday, November 9th, from 9 to 11, right here in commission chambers for our business community, and then that same day, from 6 to 8, at our library for our residents, and then Wednesday, November 17th, from 2 to 4, at our library for our not-for-profit organizations, and this is a chance for you to come and hear what can be funded and to give your opinion on what you would like to see funded, based on what category you fall in.
Got a question?
Yes, ma'am.
I think we had a question come in about whether or not people could watch it, you know, you know, would be able to participate in some other way, I don't know that we want to do a hybrid, but if they could watch the presentation, if they can give input in some way if they're not there, have, do we have plans for that?
We do, yes, we, we intend to do a Facebook Live, and they can send in their comments.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Nice, thank you.
Okay, that is all I have, anything else for the good of the order? All right, we are adjourned, thank you.